It was.
Okay.
Hey, good afternoon and welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. I will note that council members Goodella and Atkins are not joining us this evening. Council member Grant is joining us remotely. Okay, first on the agenda, we have three proclamations. I will present one. I've asked Steve to present one and Grant to present the third one. So I'll come down front. It's a month of lots of celebrations and observations because we have three more proclamations on Thursday to present. So the first one we're going to do this evening is for Economic Development Week. We have members of the Economic Development Team here with us. Ask them to come up front. We already had the photo up before the meeting. All right, and I'll present it and then you can say a few words if you'd like. Okay. So whereas the Marion Economic Development Corporation is celebrating its 36th anniversary in 2021, whereas Medco exists to be economic development thought leaders who drive competitive advantage for Marion, and whereas Medco helps exceptional companies to compete and thrive, making Marion the choice for business, and whereas Medco promotes an environment where leadership drives action, turning ideas into innovation, making Marion the best city in Iowa to grow a business, and whereas Medco contributes to an environment where a connected, skilled, and well-educated talent pipeline equips businesses to achieve more by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas Medco markets business and new investment stimulates an environment that promotes targeted economic growth opportunities by leveraging the successes and strengths of Marion, and whereas Medco assists the city of Marion in its economic development activities and collaborates with other community partners, including the Marion Chamber of Commerce, Uptown Marion, the Cedar Rapids Economic Alliance, ICR Iowa, and the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Now therefore be it resolved that I Nicholas Abouasaly, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 10th through 14th, 2021 as Economic Development Week in the city of Marion. And I encourage residents to celebrate the work of the Marion Economic Development Corporation and its board, staff, and members on the occasion of Medco's 36th anniversary, and recognize May 10th through 14th, 2021 as Economic Development Week in our city, and be reminded of the importance of this profession and expanding career opportunities and improving quality of life.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Go ahead.
If you could declare that a city holiday, we'll all take the week off together. That'd be great. I think, as you guys all know, the work that we do, and even as I look at this audience of city staff here in the room, it's really a team sport. I don't think a day goes by that I'm not visiting with someone in this room about some kind of project that we're working on. So I just really want to acknowledge the entire team that works together to support the work that we do, working directly with our with our business community. No doubt, 2021 is filled with lots of great opportunities that come with lots of challenges. Companies are having a hard time finding people right now, so we're working hard to develop some new strategies along those lines. Our economy is strong. Companies are wanting to rebound. We need to find people in big ways. There's lots of new development activity. I think as many people in this room know that are working on on projects, and we've got several great projects in the pipeline. So on behalf of our entire team, first, I want to say thank you to our team. Brady Quinn and Emily Russ are here today. Thank you for everything that you do to support our work. We are honored to do what we do in this community, on behalf of this community. And again, we're very thankful for the team, the teamwork that happens every day to to grow this community together. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Enjoy the week. Okay, Grant, Steve?
Proclamation concerning Kids to Parks Day. Whereas, May 15th, 2021 is the 11th Kids to Park Day organized by the National Park Trust and is held annually annually on the third Saturday in May. And whereas, Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead more active lifestyles to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, and hypertension. And whereas, Kids to Park Day will help to broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will promote the importance of recreating recreating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Abouasaly, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 15th as Kids to Parks Day.
I think our Parks Director would accept it from you.
Seth, I think this is really a kind of befitting for the day, given the celebration regarding the Echo Hill project that was celebrated with the Rotary this morning. And that's just a small, I think, element of the work that you and your team do for the city of Marion. So thank you.
Thank you. If I may, you know, Kids to Parks Day, you know, it's so important for kids to get outside, enjoy our great parks. We have a variety of elements within there, such as the Echo Hill Dishes. We have excellent playgrounds that are so important for the passive play to help develop those motor skills, developmental and social skills that kids are needed to to grow up and to be well-functioning adults. And so we have a lot of great amenities. So I encourage everyone to, including kids, to go out May 15th to one of the parks, one of many great parks in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Okay, our third proclamation of the day is for National Home Remodeling Month. Whereas the number of existing housing units in the United States exceeds 138 million, and whereas American households spent approximately $328 billion in 2020 on maintaining and improving their homes, and whereas professional remodeling contractors provide a valuable service to homeowners and their communities by contributing to the maintenance, value, and the beauty of their homes. And whereas the August 10th, 2020, derecho storm caused millions of dollars of damage to homes in Lynn County, Iowa, and whereas the Greater Cedar Rapids Housing and Building Association Remodelers Council joins with over 80 state and local affiliate chapter of the National Association of Home Builders, remodelers, in recognizing the importance of selecting professional remodelers, the availability of accurate consumer information, and the many benefits of a professionally remodeled home. And whereas the Greater Cedar Rapids Housing and Building Association Remodelers Council will celebrate May 2021 as National Home Remodeling Month. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Steve Jensen, on behalf of Nicholas Abouasaly, the Mayor of Marion, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Marion National Home Remodeling Month, and encourage all homeowners to maintain and improve their homes by using local professional remodelers. And it seems, especially with the pandemic that has gone on for the last year, that a tremendous amount of remodeling went on during that period of time, and certainly there's a lot more to continue in 2021.
Thank you, Steve. Rachel will send it to him.
Yeah, I think Jamie Hoff and Dean Spina are also on.
Oh, okay. Oh, Jamie and Dean, are you with us?
Yes.
Yeah, you bet.
Would you like to say anything? Please feel free to.
This is Dean Spina. Thank you for the proclamation. It's our honor to represent the Remodelers Council. In recognizing the importance importance of the remodeling industry to the city of Marion, this proclamation underscores the work of many women and men who preserve, rehabilitate, and improve our housing stock. I'd also like to mention the remodelers do something annually. It's called Remodelers Night Out for Charity. The last time we were able to have this, we raised over $6,500 to give to 10 charities in the effort to continue to build community. We also expect to raise even more funds this year. Finally, I'd like to mention that the Spring Parade of Homes is coming up, May 15 to 23. Eight of the 18 homes are in the city of Marion. So thank you for welcoming the home builders so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. And we will mail the proclamation to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll proceed with our agenda for the evening. The consent agenda, page two, no items are marked. Same with page three. Are there any items on those two pages which council members would like to discuss or ask questions about? Okay. Pages four and five, same thing. Any particular questions? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, on E8, the resolution approving the removal of stop signs on Irish Drive, I'd like to have a discussion about that either tonight or Thursday night.
Who would discuss that? Is that city engineer? Please come forward.
So my question is, my understanding, at least at least I'll have you describe what's going to happen once we take stop signs out. What is going to be the role of the traffic lights at that point in time?
Sure. So similar to how they're operating now, we are doing a slight change to them, but they will flash. So they are emergency signals at this point. So until it meets warrants or we are directed to, they will continue to flash. So it'll be yellow for eastbound, east and westbound traffic. For north-south traffic, it will flash red.
Yeah, so I think one of the one of the concerns I have is, I mean, this is the only set of flashing lights around the city. And what I have seen multiple times, both in leaving the Y and actually leaving the Collins event this morning, is somebody sitting on Tower Terrace with the flashing yellow light stopping, and then just sitting there looking around, waiting to figure out what to do. And so traffic is stopping on that flashing yellow light. So I understand the aspect about having the warrants, but that's also a pretty wide meridian or intersection across there if you're on Irish Drive, you know, to get across all of a sudden if somebody's stopping on yellow and not sure what to do. And, you know, I know we we're not meeting the warrants, but I would probably entertain the question, should those be turned on due to the size of that intersection and some of the confusion that people have with the flashing yellow lights?
So I'm not sure how many council members are aware, but even I believe it's either after 11:00 or midnight, most of our traffic signals in the city actually go to that operation.
Right, after after a certain hour at night.
Yep.
But not during the day.
Not during the day.
Right.
There's a few that don't, like Boyson and Al Burnett. And then there's a few, obviously, on the the main roads, 13 and 151, that would would stay operational 24/7. So unless we get direction or it meets warrants, it's going to be flashing.
And so I don't, yeah, I don't know how the other side of council people feel on it, but as the different times I've been there, about 50% of the time, somebody's stopping on the flashing yellow, and that's a concern to me.
So by having them just flashing with yellow, it's caution. It's a yield. Red, you're supposed to stop. Correct. Yep. That's the point of it. And then obviously, when the the fire department hits their button or however they end up operating the signal, then it'll go all red, except for them, for them to respond. That's the whole reason for that signal is for their operation so that they have free flow of traffic out of the fire station.
So when I I'm not really too familiar with the term warrants, but let me ask my question in maybe a slightly different way. Of the traffic that goes through that intersection on Tower Terrace now, how much of an increase would we have to see that would then justify or warrant those signals being turned on to normal operation?
So we would have to do a full traffic study. So we'd have to put our counters out there. We would have to have individuals out there for a period of time to count to see where we're at today for me to answer that. I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the the major thing you look at. So it depends. There's eight-hour time limit of your so many cars in eight hours. There's supposed to be so many cars within four hours. It also looks at what's the differential between the primary, which would be Tower Terrace, the secondary, which would be Irish Drive. There are also warrants that look at pedestrian counts and how many pedestrians do you have that are trying to cross it? So there's several different aspects. It's not just one number that we look at.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
So just to follow on to that, so a little bit, we don't, we don't have the the data to answer the question that I had. And also, at such point, we will have to collect that data in order to make a determination whether they go to full operation. Are there any other kind of safety-related occurrences that might happen, or I should say, I would hope they wouldn't happen, somebody getting struck, a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or a collision that would then change our opinion on how they ought to operate at this point?
So in a normal situation, if the fire station was not going in, that signal would not be there today. We would wait until it met the required engineering study to put that signal in. That is only there for the fire station. If we want to give it some time, wait for COVID to stop having effect on traffic, look at it when the Y is fully open, and then there's a development that's happening in the northeast quadrant of that, wait till all that happens, that people start walking to the park, we could do a traffic study, determine how close we are to meeting those warrants to fully turn it on, would be my recommendation. But right now, I would say it likely does not meet warrants. If if council wants to direct us to spend time to do that, we can take the time and and see where we're at. But at this point, that's not a proposal.
One last question, Your Honor. Trust me, Mr. Barcelo, trust me. Do do we at the local level have a decision, or is it is it permissible for us to override the warrants and make a local decision?
So yeah, so technically, you could have a traffic signal that meets zero warrants. I, as staff and as an engineer, will not recommend it be turned on. But as city council, you set policy, and you can tell us to flip the switch.
Anyone else? Yes, Steve.
Maybe against legal as well, but.
Okay, so what would be the downside? Okay, so what would be the downside to turning it on?
Standard of care. So if you turn it on, and it's not supposed to be turned on because it doesn't meet set standards, and there's an accident out there, correct me if I'm wrong, but that opens it up to additional liability, because we are not following the state standard.
Well, seeing you're beginning, you're being over cautious in that respect if you turn it on. Again, my my opinion is, I think it's causing problems just being in the flashing situation. I think that's, again, I, again, I'm not the engineer. I don't look at it. But as I've been in that intersection a number of times, it seems it's causing more certain number of problems versus having it on. So I know there's a difference of that as well. So.
So the the one change that we're making, if it hasn't been already made, was the the left turn lanes were flashing red instead of yellow. That was causing some confusion. Those are if they have not been already, they are changing to yellow. So it's all yellow in one direction, all red in the other direction. And so that's being already on the books to be changed.
Other questions, comments? Any input? Okay. Anything else on pages? One through five. There should be discussed, or we have questions on. Okay, otherwise, we'll move on to page six. Items A1 and 2 are not marked. Any questions on those? Okay, we'll move on to B1, Public Service.
Thank you, Your Honor. So item number one for Public Service is a proposed resolution to select a Conlan Construction Company as our new construction manager for both the storm repairs at our existing facility and for the new public service maintenance facility. For about the past six months, we've been working with our outside consulting firms in identifying the appropriate firm that could handle a project like this. We came down to the conclusion that Conlan does have the appropriate personnel, the horsepower, to come in and assist us not only with the storm repairs, but also assist us with getting our facility back on track. So after about six months, we took it to the Public Service Board, they approved, and therefore we're recommending moving forward with the Conlan Construction. The we got these broken up into two separate projects. If the council approves a resolution tonight, the next meeting in May, we'd bring forward the actual contracts that would be approved for the storm repairs at our existing facility, as well as the new public service facility. So that's what we're recommending to move forward.
Okay, questions for Ryan?
Yes, Steve.
My question is not directly to, well, it's indirectly related to this project and the schedule, obviously, that Conlan Construction is going to have to put out. But there was talk in the past about a concrete roof that might be supported by FEMA, and obviously that would affect the timing and moving ahead on this project. Is there any update?
As of right now, we're not looking for any public assistance from FEMA to support that. However, we are looking at that because that has become financially advantageous to the city. So what I'm saying is, we are going to look at that, because right now, that's actually a more cost-effective alternative.
Okay, because last time when we looked at it, it was not.
Yeah, I know. Price of steel has gone up quite a bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Amazing how things change in 18 months.
Things change within years.
Wow. Okay.
Other questions? Yes, Grant?
Ryan, as I looked at the proposal, and I was really focusing on the complement of personnel that they would recommend for the project, what could elect to bring into the project. I noticed they have, they cited they have a quality control manager.
Correct.
Would it, is it our intent to have been really deeply involved?
Yes.
Renew?
Yes.
Good question.
Is he going to live in a Quonset hut on site?
A construction trailer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on this item? All right, items C1 and D1 are not marked. Any questions on those? Okay, we'll move on to D2. Under parks.
So you'll recognize, we had a previous contract with Heartland Roofing for the Willowood Bath House and Pump House. That took care of the repairs to the shingles there. At the at the time, when we got the bids, the skylight replacements were not available anywhere. None of the contractors could get them. They finally became available. This followed with them in the budget for the for what's covered under insurance. And so it would be staff recommendation to to move forward with a skylight replacement. They should be able to get this done within the within the month before pool opening.
Any questions on? Item D2. Any questions? All right, D3.
So D3, so this is a separate project for FEMA. We had some hazardous trees that were in the right of way that were in conflict of utilities that we had to wait till utility companies had clearance. By the time they got clearance, the the contract with SDR for the right of way expired. We also had trees within the cemetery that were were missed, but they're they're there, existing hazardous. We're estimating around 37 37 trees to be removed. So we went out for a contract to get these trees removed. This is FEMA eligible. And we received four bids, and the lowest being Frank's Tree Service out of Marion, Iowa, for $54,550. They're scheduled 14 days. It looks like there's a huge discrepancy there. A big part of that is is one, because Frank's Frank's Tree Service has the equipment to do it, and they have the workers, so they are able to do it more efficiently. These trees are quite large, so they do require crane work and experienced arborists to be able to remove them safely, and especially with all the liabilities with the cemetery. Because of their professionalism, they're able to offer a lower bid to even Breeden, who currently works with the city under under a contract. So these are FEMA eligible. We've been working with with Ryan Miller on on being able to have the debris, be able to haul the debris, and then also for the monitoring service, to be able to include that in, to make sure that everything is eligible for FEMA. It would be staff recommendation to approve Frank Tree Service for these contract removals, and we'll have a a contract for Thursday's meeting to proceed with them.
Okay, any questions on this item or the contract? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Seth, just to clarify in my own mind, so these trees no longer have any utility conflict?
No, no. So there needs to be 10-foot clearance within the right of way. And so we were able to get that, you know, they were a little bit slower and behind. They ball littered a little bit, but so now they're no longer in conflict. The cemetery trees weren't necessarily in conflict, but obviously, there's huge liabilities within the headstones and things like that nature.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious in that there would be ongoing coordination with Alliant or MediaCom or whomever in order to manage those lines if they would be in conflict with a tree drop.
Yeah, so they they should be no longer in conflict, but we still wrote wrote in there within the contract to still have those points of communication. And our city arborist, Mike, he does have good connections with the with the utility company. So he's he's been in constant contact with them and making sure that these those were addressed before we had a contractor go in and remove them.
Yeah, the questions are not Adam. Thank you, Seth.
All right, thank you.
On to engineering, A1. Contract and bond with Pachi Construction.
So last council meeting, we had the bids and awarded the contract, so the almost six point nine million dollar contract. So now this is actually approving their bond, their insurance and the contract. Then we'll give them the notice to proceed with a completion date of October twenty eighth of twenty twenty for this construction season and then it goes into another one for the following construction season with LDs and incentive of two thousand dollars per day.
Okay. Questions?
Steve? Yeah, I'm just confused about the date that's up there, completed October twenty eighth.
For the first period. All right, yeah, so the date, I don't know where I got that from, but basically it's a two year project.
Yeah. So it says twenty twenty.
Yep, I do not have the right date in there.
Well, that should be twenty twenty.
Twenty one, I believe, for this. Again, it's broken into two different milestone dates. There's one for before this winter and there's one before next winter.
All right, very good. Other questions? All right, E2, Mike?
So E2 is the project calendar for our annual slip lining project. So this is just approving that project calendar. The estimate is a hundred nineteen thousand. The bids would be due on the twenty fifth of May with council consideration on June third and a completion date of the twentieth of October with liquidated damages of three hundred dollars per day each calendar day. So this is a project that they just have to access the manholes. They run the liner on the inside of the pipe, so it's relatively minor inconvenience.
Questions? E3.
So for E3 on Thursday, we will have a public hearing for the bids. We did get five bids for our storm sewer project. The low bid was from Brecky Construction at a hundred and eight thousand five hundred and five dollars and zero cents, which was ninety four point three seven percent of the engineer's estimate. As a late start of eight sixteen twenty one with thirty working days and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. There should be a detailed bid tab in your council packet.
Question? All right. E5.
So E5 and E6, we will also have a public hearing on the twenty twenty one sanitary sewer manhole project. And this is where we go in and replace brick manholes and put new concrete manholes in. We did receive four bids. Again, Brecky Construction was the low bid. Their bid was a one hundred and one hundred and eleven thousand ninety five dollars and zero cents, which was ninety two point nine seven percent of the engineer's estimate. August sixteenth twenty one is the late start date with thirty working days and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages.
Any questions? E7.
So E7 and E8 is the first ordinance reading for the amended floodplain ordinance and also adopting the new flood insurance study and the FEMA rate map. This is the first of three readings. We have to have it adopted by July twentieth in order to stay with the state program. And we did not include the substantial or the cumulative substantial damage in there. We can revisit that at a later date. I have requested the policy owner information from FEMA, but it could be a couple of months before we get that.
Questions? E9.
E9 is a petition that was received from Medco and several companies out there to have TAC look at the intersection of Lynn Air Avenue and Highway one fifty one and Iowa thirteen for the northbound to eastbound churning movement to see if there's any improvements that could be done there. So we'll have to look at traffic counts and come back with an alternative. This might be something as we look into it that we suggest doing an application to the DOT program of TEEP. It's the Transportation Engineering Assistance Program. We'll still have to do the counts, but they will actually do the engineering report for us since we don't have a traffic engineer on staff. So if we do that, we will come back to city council to ask for that authorization.
Questions? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Mike, I wasn't able to discern from Medco's letter. Has this been a longstanding problem for them out there?
This is the first I'm hearing of it, but you can kind of tell from the image that there is some tracking that occurs on the shoulder. There are some clearance requirements being a primary and that's probably more of the deal. You know, if we widen that shoulder so that they can off track, the problem is that signal head is likely too close. So we're talking about a new signal head, so it's not an easy fix.
Other questions? E10.
E10 is the preliminary project calendar for the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer. This is segment seven of the fourteen or fifteen different segments. The city of Marion is the primary on this as it is on our jurisdiction. This is mostly on the landowner South one hundred. We recently had a meeting with them and they were good with this alignment, so now we are proceeding with the project calendar so that then we can start the process for property acquisition.
Okay, any questions on this one? E11.
So E11 is the draft policy that for the derecho sidewalk damage. So it's in your council packet. The number that staff put in there was twenty seven dollars per square yard. So a typical panel is a four by four panel. Obviously, it's going to vary depending on where you're at in the city. That's only about forty eight dollars and six cents. I've heard through the grapevine that if you're a homeowner and you want to go hire a contractor, do it. A lot of times they'll charge two hundred dollars per panel or more. So wanted to make sure that that number was good for city council. If you wanted to raise it, lower it. And then any other comments regarding the policy that you would like modified for Thursday?
Okay, any thoughts on that one? Go ahead, Grant.
Well, Mike, you and I and Lon had some advanced correspondence on this and I was assuming that this draft policy would be a, or I should say policy, would be a document that a resident might have possession of as they navigate their way through repair of the sidewalk. Is that correct?
They could. I'm going to assume that we're going to have to take quite a few phone calls and explain things to them because right of way isn't always the most readily known aspect of it, but we'll be able to explain that to them over the phone.
Well, and that was so, based on my assumption, what I was, I made a recommendation to enhance the language around the description of where the right of way is so that that eliminates a little uncertainty or confusion with the resident. And quite honestly, you just mentioned a great feature of this whole effort is that maybe clarity on communication and having this available to affected residents would eliminate a lot of telephone calls that you might have to handle. So that their responsibilities and obligations as well as ours in this special policy are effectively delineated, so it just takes uncertainty and question out of the transaction. That's that's all I was really thinking of is quite honestly, I was trying to think of ways to reduce potentially the burden of, you know, informational burden that you all might have to support. So that was the basis of my limited text revisions to that.
Yeah, and we could add a definition of right of way. It's just we try not to put definitions of everything into every policy, but.
Your honor, if I just follow on with that. So like I say, again, if I'm thinking of this as a document that is informative to a resident having a bit of context built into it and to keep it simple, that's a funny word for me to use. It is, it would be warranted just so that coming out of the gate, they have clarity of what their obligations are going to be with whatever they're going to do. So that's if that's appropriate to do, great. I'm just, I'm just really just thinking about the simplifying the total set of transactions that might happen here.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, Mike.
So is council okay with the dollar amount? So what I used was half the price of what we paid based on the recent set of bids we got, so I don't know if that's high enough. If, you know, a citizen, if they're paying two hundred dollars a panel and the city says they're going to pay forty eight, may say, what's the point? But I, that's up to city council on how much reimbursement you want to do.
Go ahead, Steve.
You know, I think you can see numbers all over the range in this environment right now, just like you want to get a tree stumped. I mean, the numbers are all over the place and some are two to three times higher than others. So the fact that you can find a two hundred dollar one doesn't surprise me. I think it's going to be one of the extraordinarily high ones. I also think there's going to be people doing the work by themselves as well, because if you're only replacing a section of a sidewalk, that's not a big project. So there's a number of people that'll do it themselves or grab their neighbor and they'll fix it themselves and some maybe already have done that. So in that context, I'll throw the high numbers out of there, assume there's some lower numbers and you're, so you're probably in the ballpark. So I find it acceptable.
I mean, I would defer to your recommendation.
That's what I did, but again, it's a policy.
No, I understand, you know, like Steve, I don't know how to gauge that. I mean, I would defer to your, personally defer to your recommendation. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, well, that was another beneficial feature of your draft document. The policy was, I think it gave a benchmark of that forty eight dollars and six cents value in why that was a reasonable number. That might be informative to somebody who is in fact asking a contractor to come do it. So I think that's a good informational piece for a resident to have.
Okay, other questions on that? You have what you need, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Under community development, there are five items, none of which are marked. Are there any questions on any of those? Okay. In anticipation of no questions, the chief is already up at the podium, so.
And I'm so thrilled to be here.
Her report here, okay. She's excited to fill us in on what's going on and it's looking good.
Well, the last time I spoke with all of you, I told you that we would be in there in May. It's May and we're not in there, so I wanted to give you an update. All kidding aside, there was some issues that came up, not only with the Rachel and COVID during this process, but here in the last couple of months, there was a change in the management team for our construction company, Kristner Construction. And so some things got switched around. Some orders were made that couldn't be delivered. And as you've heard probably on the news, there's trouble getting building materials. Well, we've fallen into that. Some of the materials that we need to finish it off had to be reordered and they will not be shipped until June. So the new date that I have been given by OPN and CCI is mid-June. So that's the update I wanted to give you. I was going through all my records too and it was actually June two thousand eighteen when we purchased the property. So this has been a three year process. A long process, so, but we're trucking along and I truly believe there's a reason for everything. And I'm sure it's just to tell us that it's going to be even better than what we expected, so.
As much as we're anxious to have it be done and see you moved in, you know, we've waited actually longer than twenty eighteen. We've waited probably a decade for this, so.
Exactly.
One more month isn't going to hurt anybody. We're excited about the end result. It's looking really good. Especially now that all the equipment is gone from the, you can really see the building now and it's just it's looking, and I hear more and more comments about it from the public, so.
And in a way, I'm kind of glad that it's been postponed so that the landscaping can get completed.
Sure.
So we can have all of that done at once, so. Any questions for me about the project?
Thanks for updating us. Any questions?
Yeah, you're going to be like all the rest of us when you start that landscaping is asking for a lot of rain to get the grass started and everything growing, so.
Exactly.
Indeed.
Do you have a sprinkler system out there?
The green roof is actually drought resistant, so.
Oh, God. Any questions for the chief? All right, thank you.
Thank you, your honor.
Okay. Our final item is a closed session. Council member Atkins is not here, who will make the motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn a closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. Second?
It's moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. We'll ask for the attorney's statement.
Your honor, I have reviewed the subject matter for the proposed closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code section twenty one point five one C.
All right, thank you, Kara. Any discussion before we vote? Okay, we'll take, do the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are now adjourned to closed session. And we will return to open session upon completion. Thank you for joining us. We'll see everyone on Thursday. All right.